Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is our Tuesday, December 8th, regular meeting of the Mason County Commission. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Is there any correspondence to come before this commission?
Yes, there is. The Tricia Van Degele applied to the planning advisory commission. Gary Ornis, Dave Gerstad, and Frank Benavente applied to the housing authority board. Board of Allen County School Districts and Fire District Four submitted their levy and budget circumcisions for 2015. And Orrin Hopebrief sent a letter regarding math candidate method.
Thank you. Commission, if you have no objection, I'm going to add on item 4.2, which is Ross McDowell, who is the head of our emergency management, has some information you'd like to share with the community, no objection? Ross, would you mind stepping up to the podium, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. Ross McDowell, emergency management manager. What I'd like to talk or do a little brief on is what is called the Parade of Storms is what they're calling this winter storms that we're having currently this week, started on Monday. The forecast is, obviously, we're having warmer temperatures currently right now. They're looking at anywhere from one to four inches, and I would be leaning more toward the four inches of rain. We've had quite a bit in the last 24-hour period. In Duwato itself, we've had people tell us that they've already had four inches there with no problems. So, it's kind of a scary thing. Couldn't get any water in the summer, but we got it now, so we got it coming. The rivers, a little bit of the conditions currently, the Skokomish River is at 17.5. They're forecasting it going up to 18. Okay? The Tahuya River, I just got an update on that. That one is not on a gauge itself, but it's running fast and running very high. The Public Works people that were out there are stating that it looks like it's going to be okay the way it's going, but they're going to keep an eye on it all day and report back to me of what's going on with the river. We've had a couple calls from people from there with some concerns because of the 2006, '07 floods that occurred, that they're seeing a lot of the same pattern, which is good. That means that they're actually paying attention to what's going on, and they do understand and have called out for needing some help if they need it. And we have North Mason Fire onboard with that, too, for us. Currently, the dams, Tacoma Power is releasing 2,100 cubic feet per second coming out of the dam, which is an increase. But the thing is, you've got to release some of that water because they're getting the four inches of water, too, up there. So, you release as soon as you can to get that out. Tahuya Dam, which is actually in Kitsap County, has decided to release also. They're releasing 250 cubic feet per second maximum, and that's going into the Tahuya River, which is also why we're kind of watching that to see what exactly it does because we don't have an inundation map from them. So, we'll be able to actually look at that now and use it as our history. Power outages, Taylor Town, Lynch, Lynch Road, Fawn Lake, all reporting they had power outages this morning. If you didn't get to see it, there was nice lightning this morning. I got to see that on my way in. It was a nice little show for us this morning. So, PUD 3 and PUD 1 both getting call-ins from different areas, and they're working on making sure people's power is back up. One thing I would like to say to remind people, if you have cordless phones, they will not work when your power's out. That's why it's good to keep a corded phone that you can just plug in. That way, you can still use the phone to call PUD and let them know your power is out if you don't have cell phone coverage. Also, the winds, the winds are going to be picking up today. We're very lucky we're not on the coast. The coast has really got it pretty good on the winds, but even coming over here from Public Works, you can see the trees are bending. It's all, it's coming from the coastal side, so we're supposed to get gusty winds up to 35. So, we're going to see some of this, and it's going to be raining all day today and all the way through. Friday is supposed to be the reprieve day. So, we're keeping an eye on what's happening out there and ask people if they have power outages, make sure they call PUD. If they need any help, they can contact us at 427-7535, which is the emergency management number. We'll try to work out and get some things for them. It is kind of late to ask for sandbags. We have, we've talked to a couple of people who asked for them, and if the water's already up, the sandbags are not going to help, and they're very time-consuming, so... Any questions if you have any?
I was going to say, thanks, Ross.
Sure.
I went up to Holiday Beach yesterday, the water out in Sun Creek there, or Miller Creek, I think it's called, is just under the bridge. So, there's probably going to be some issues with state highways as well.
Correct.
I think there's a small slide up a little off, but expect some...
Right. We're expecting the slides. That's the big thing. We've asked people if they see any kind of seepage, and seepage is basically not seeing water flowing off of a hill, but coming through the hill. If they see that, to go ahead and get ahold of us or get ahold of Public Works. We will decide if it's on 101 or we'll get it to the right people, but get the information to us so that we can get that out and do some mitigation on it before it becomes a major slide.
Skokomish Valley Road, is it closed?
Oh, it's closed. Oh, yeah. There's recreational jet skiing on there right now, actually, as a matter of fact. So, yeah, we have a couple that are closed, North Shore is closed, part of North Shore for a slide. And also, St. Andrews is still closed, but that's for a repair. But we've been very fortunate, they did not close 106. We thought they were going to, but we already had a plan in place with Brockdale to use that and talk to the Skokomish Tribe, and they could still keep that open, really, but we're watching that. That's one of them that usually will end up having to close.
And the tides are very high.
Unfortunately, the tides are very high, and they're supposed to get some really nice breakers coming in, like 45-foot breakers today due to the wind. Yeah. Tai Tai, I think it comes in at noon today and goes out really quick. So, we're, the water's going to stay.
When you look at me now, you can't imagine me on a surfboard, but I was having that with a very exciting...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I wouldn't mind sitting there watching it, you know, having a cup of coffee, but not right now, no.
You'd be crazy once in a while.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ross.
Thank you, Ross.
Any other correspondence or organizational business to come for the body?
Okay.
Then we will move on to item number five, which is your open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you wait and speak about it. At that time, you'll be given your opportunity to testify. With that being said, if it's not on the agenda, you'll be given up to five minutes per person, 15 minutes total for everybody, so we ask that you please be short, concise, and allow opportunities for others to speak. With that being said, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to item number six, which is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the agenda as presented today.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded for the adoption of the agenda as presented today. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the November 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2015 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the November 10th, 17th, and 24th, 2015 regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. Next up is the approval of the action agenda. All items listed under the action agenda may be enacted by one motion unless the commissioner or a citizen has it removed for a separate vote. We will go ahead and read each of the items on the action agenda to you. You'll be given an opportunity at that time to ask a question that would help you to decide whether or not to take it off for a separate vote. But if you would like to testify, please, we'll be taking it off for a separate vote. You'll be given your opportunity to speak to the commission and the community about that particular issue. With that being said, if you don't mind, I will read item number 8.1 through 8.3. Commissioner Jeffries, if you would read 8.4 through 8.6, and Commissioner Sheldon, 8.7 through 8.10, please. Item number 8.1, approval to a voice, no objection to a special occasion license for North Mason Music Booster Club for a fundraiser event on December 12, 2015 at the Thaler Center in Belfair. Item number 8.2, approval to sign the grant agreement W2RC PG dash 1517 dash MACO dash 00025, you've got to be kidding me, between the Waste, between the Waste to Resources Program of the Washington State Department of Ecology and Mason County Public Health. The grant is effective 7/10/2015 through 6/30/2017 with a total project cost of $74,568 from Ecology and $24,846 from the county share. This funding was anticipated and included in the 2016 budget. Item number 8.3, approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund application for food, $300, utilities, $308.37, and housing, $800, for a total of $1,408.37 as recommended by the Veterans Service Office.
Item 8.4, approval to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner and grant the vacation right of the vacation number 393 as petitioned by Kenan Lainea Pulsom. Subject to the conditions and the findings, conclusion and recommendations of the hearing examiner. 8.5, approval to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner to vacate a portion of the Schaefer Park Road, vacation number 392. Subject to the conditions and the findings, conclusion and recommendations of the hearing examiner. 8.6, approval of the resolution, amending resolution 16 dash 4 to amend the health insurance contributions for participants of the PEBB medical program for elected officials and eligible non-represented employees as follows. $748.68 per month for individuals enrolled as an employee with no dependents, and $1,292.23 per month for individuals enrolled with one or more dependents, and approval of a .08% cost of living adjustment, COLA, for elected officials and non-represented employees.
8.7, approval of the memorandum of understanding, MOU directions, as support bargaining unit of the Woodworkers Local Lodge, W38 International Association of Machinists, IAM, which provides for the transition of the Nelson, to the Nelson Trust for health insurance. 8.8, approval of the resolution authorizing the support services director to sign the employer application and participation agreement to the Northwest Forest Products Association Woodworkers District Lodge 1, International Association of Machinists, IAM, A of Val CIO Health and Welfare Plan and Trust, otherwise known as the Nelson Trust, to allow the Woodworkers Local Lodge, W38, IAM to join. 8.9, approval to set a 2015 budget hearing on Tuesday, December 22, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. for Public Health slash Environmental to consider an $80,000 supplemental appropriation and a $125,000 budget transfer from the real estate excise tax 2, REIT 2, fund developer sewer fund number 413. And finally, 8.10, approval to authorize the chair to sign a letter to the state auditor for the exit conference.
Thank you. Now that that has been read to the public, this is your opportunity to ask any questions that you may have in regards to any of the issues that has been read to you so that you would be able to make a educated decision on whether or not to have to take it off for a separate vote. With that being said, does anybody have any questions? Commissioners, any questions at all? Hearing none, are there any items anybody would like to take them off for a separate vote? Commissioners, any items? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Well, it's an easy one, Mr. Chairman. I move that all the items on the action agenda for today be approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
Okay, I've been moving and seconded, that all the items on the action agenda as presented today be approved by the county commission. With that being said, is there any discussion?
Nope. Bargaining unit crap and bargaining unit action there and... End of year finals.
Commissioner?
Well, maybe just an item on the $125,000 budget transfer from real estate excise tax to developer sewer fund. That's what we've done in the past.
That's correct.
Same amount.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. We are early, so we will go ahead and, we can't start our public hearing until 9:30, so we will go ahead and jump to item number, item number 10, which would be an opportunity for department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads who would like to speak? Are there, please, come on.
Justin Smith, WSU Extension, good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Netherland for showing up to Cultivating Success and participating in the discussion on marketing your small farm program in Mason County. Today is the last session for the course, so participants will be presenting their business plans as the culmination of the program over the last eight, 10 weeks. It starts, it's open to the public, it starts at 6:00 in the Eleanor Room at Mason General Hospital, and, yeah, all are welcome to come see what people were able to put together in terms of what they want to start or expand around their existing farm business in Mason County. Thank you.
Do you have venture capitalists in the audience?
No. No. So, we did, we did have a discussion on funding opportunities, and there will be some funding opportunities. I believe Enterprise Rescue has been invited to come and sit in and provide feedback to people that are going to be presenting the business plan. So, there is that kind of being able to bridge those kind of funding opportunities.
What time and where?
6 o'clock tonight, Eleanor Room, Mason General Hospital.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And for those of you that don't know, they move the rooms downstairs to upstairs. Shifted things a lot, changed stuff this very time.
I'm glad you were able to show up. Thank you.
Any other department heads, elected officials?
I just want to take a moment to share a great opportunity that the sheriff's office, along with District 4 Fire, had last night. As some of you recall, on September 11th this year, Special Forces Operations Group performing training in Mason County, and Captain James Onn perished in a training incident, and our office, along with District 4 and our search and rescue team, were part of the recovery for Captain James Onn. A couple weeks ago, we were contacted by the First Special Forces Group, Joint Base Lewis McCord, and asked if we would attend a meeting in, I called their compound, and it's not a place where you, the average people, just get to walk in. And so, last night, the sheriff's office was, had the opportunity to go in, and they honored us last night for our work with the First Special Forces Group, major involved in that, talked about the cooperative effort of two organizations that technically, on a lot of things, we worked very, very differently, but were able to, in a very short time, come together on a mission. And we mentioned that that hadn't been done very often before with other places. The recognition that was handed to each was in recognition of dedicated assistance during the search and rescue for our fallen soldier on September 11th, 2015. Their personal and professional commitment through this endeavor would be forever appreciated by the men at the First Special Forces Group, the Airborne Division, Joint Base Lewis McCord. For many of you, a little agent on this, but probably for those of you over 50 would remember that group more as what we would call the Green Beret. And, yes, they did play a very sad song last night, is in memory, and then we met Mr. and Mrs. Onn, Captain Onn's parents were there last night, and got a chance to meet and sit with them. With that, they gave each one of us a certificate, but I was going to pass it around because it's kind of a cherished item among the forces, it's the U.S. Special Forces Green Beret coin that was awarded each one of our members that participated in that, so I'll pass that around for you to look at, but it was a wonderful evening up there, and I would tell you that when they say that they're America's Best, those folks truly are. Their training is unbelievable when you get a chance to go through their facility and look at the level that they perform to, and so, what an honor it was last night to sit and eat dinner with the America's Best, with the Green Beret. So, I'll pass that around, you can look at it if you'd like.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Congratulations, Sheriff, you did a great job there.
Are there any other elected officials who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we're still early, so let's go ahead and jump right into Commissioner I'll go ahead and go first. Budget workshop, that was Realtors, that was a gentleman that had built a very large building and put it out there a little bit, there's a possibility of a type of a museum type situation for vehicles. Like to see that come to the north end, and that's one of the things they're talking about. We'll take it, we'll take every little part of that we can get. Let's see. I also attended the Washington State University Marketing, Cultivating Success, it was a wonderful event, I appreciate the opportunity to go there and listen to these people. Not all of them were young either, I expected them all to be young, but they weren't, they had different ages and backgrounds. Sheriff's Advisory Breakfast, Women's Republican Christmas Party. I attended the North Mason Parade, and it was a very, very wet parade, would they say it lasted seven minutes? But you know what? It's ours, I'm proud of it, I'll love it, I'll take it. I went there, not as a commercial, for business, that was a sponsor that I was a part of. We had our briefings, we had our budget hearings, we had our budget workshops, and I attended a Fort Val meeting last night. This next week, after we leave here, I have the Canal Coordinating Council meeting, we have a special meeting in Mason Transit Authority, EDC is having their Christmas gathering, get together. We have another public hearing this week. I also have a Christmas event with the Kuanians here, and we have John L. Scott Christmas Party, Trowson Lake Potluck, EDC meetings. Tampa County's are having their call-in, I'm not sure if you'll be in that or not. We also have our briefings again, budget workshop again, and then I have a Kilmer event on Monday evening.
Thank you. I'll go ahead, so following last week's meeting, regular meeting, we had a budget workshop, I attended the Skokomish Choir, brand-new community choir recital at the Transit Center, a road meeting, and then meeting of the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Board. Took our housing coordinator to meet with the Community Action Council CFO about, or about their, their housing work that they do and how, what they're looking for here in the community for potentially more housing, for tax exempt investor housing, and there is a plot of land that's very promising that they'll start looking at and finding investors for. Had a meeting of the Executive Council, the Mason Transit Authority Board, met with some constituents about some permitting issues, and then, let's see, had a meeting of the infrastructure ports and the EDC and Public Works, both the city and the county, regarding how to prioritize our infrastructure needs. Had a meeting with our auditor, Herr, and then the Skokomish Watership Action Team's semi-annual meeting, and then meeting from an employee of the Thurston County Pretrial Services to hear about their program. We also had a very wet parade here in the city of Shelton on Friday, and thank you, KMS, for your work on that and just for being the announcers, for, you always do a great job. And it was, it was very well-attended this year for having the weather.
That was a surprise.
Right. We had briefings yesterday and, as well as a budget hearing, and then budget workshops in the afternoon following, following this meeting, let's see, we'll have, I have a meeting with Mace Comp, so I will not be able to be at the Hood Canal Coordinating Council, I might try to go for a little or two, but... And then we have a special meeting of the Mason Transit Authority Board with an executive session, and tonight is the Economic Development Council's holiday party. We have a public hearing on Wednesday on our tax levy, a continued one, and then I'll have Community Action Council Board meeting that evening, and there'll be a half-day meeting of the Regional Economic Development Councils down at Great Wolf Lodge doing the economic report, or economic summit for the five-county area that get together for these meetings. And then, sorry, that's not on. We have interviews for a new director of the Mason, of the Mason Matters organization, and then the road meeting's having a Christmas lunch and brunch on Saturday, and then Friday I do have a meeting of the Emergency Food Assistance Council that grants monies to agencies in the area that do food assistance. We have briefings on Monday, I'm back for briefings on Monday, and then we have our audit, exit, auditors' exit moments on Monday as well. I will be attending Derek Kilmer's fundraiser in town here at the, is it ZIMs, is it not? Okay. And then, we do have a budget workshop scheduled on our calendar, but whether we're going to use it is not clear. in use is not clear. Back for Commissioner meetings on Tuesday with, uh, another public hearing, and Mason Transit Authority Board meet, regular meeting on Tuesday, 15th and afternoon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll go back to last week when I met with Judy Scott from the Port of Allen and several, and their executive directors or others are, uh, attempting to, uh, find some state monies to help with their relocation and, uh, of the old Sergeant Oyster House at, at the Port of Allen, which sounds like a very interesting project, there's very, a lot of historical significance there. Uh, we've had several, as both Commissioners have mentioned, several, uh, meetings and, uh, workshops on the budget as we move ahead. Uh, I had to go down to Portland to pick up a car, it died on me down there, and, you know, talk about the weather. I didn't want to, when I finally got the car, I didn't want to drive back through all that Portland travel, so I went out through Astoria and, and north over the bridge, and then turned towards, uh, Mecel. And I could see why they, uh, Lewis and Clark called that first rest stop there, the desolation niche, or not. It was raining sideways like it is here today. Spent some time with PD3 and PD1 Commissioners at the, uh, PD Association Annual Meeting at C-TAC. Met with several constituents last week as well on, on issues that they have, of course, that we all do, and, um, unfortunately wasn't able to, uh, attend the, uh, Skookomish Watership Action, uh, meeting, but I heard a lot, a lot about it. Yesterday morning I had a meeting with, uh, Green Diamond, talked a little bit about what, what they're doing. Um, I don't know if I got the figures exactly right, but I think they've reduced from 92 employees down to 66. So, uh, and they point out very, uh, apparently, uh, to everyone as a pretty apparent, that although there's a lot of log trucks running, uh, most of those logs are, all those logs are going out of the county. We're not cutting any boards in, in Mason County right now. It'll be the first time in a hundred years it's not a, not a sawmill operating. We had our, uh, budget hearing yesterday, um, some briefings on labor issues, and, uh, we'll have our, as we say, our, uh, Coacher Jeffrey's mentioned, we'll have our, uh, hearing tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and that's, uh, mandated by Initiative 547 on our tax levy rates. Uh, I forgot, uh, tonight I'll have a, uh, be able to phone in to the, uh, MTA Mason Transit Meeting at 5:00 to 6:00. I have a meeting with the Port of Bremerton, uh, in, uh, at the airport, Bremerton Airport tonight. And, uh, a couple of other things coming on is, um, uh, the Public Power Council meeting that I'll have during the middle of the week, and then also on Friday I'll be at Port Townsend to testify at a Fish and Wildlife Commission at 8:00 AM, so let's see how that goes.
You have a question with the issues?
Yeah, uh, some of like, some of like fishing issue, so they, uh, it's unusual, you know, we're at at 9:30. It's unusual, but some lake residents get their drinking water from the lake itself.
That's rare.
For a, for a large, large, uh, area to get that. So they have a lot of concerns about the, the fishing regulations in a lake that is also drinking water, so...
So, uh, a little clarification, uh, I'll have to be at the Opera Exit, uh, that part of the, the briefing, and, um, uh, if you don't mind, pass on, on the exit bill, uh, I will not be there to them, and I apologize, it's the infant, that's canceled. I have no idea.
I will.
Uh, don't we still have a...
I've mentioned one other item, I forgot. Uh, I'll be meeting at 8:00 in the morning on, um, Monday, the Port of, there with Mary Thompson. I've known her husband for a long time, Dick Thompson, who was Chief Staff for Governor Locke and others. But, uh, she's working on, uh, a, uh, project with Simpson looking at the Roundhouse and, uh, what possibilities might be there, so, uh, that'll be on Monday morning.
Okay, so, we are now at that time. We will go ahead and, uh, we will open our hearing. This is a public hearing, uh, in regards to supplemental appropriations, budget transfer of staff. Frank Pinter.
Thank you, Commissioners. Frank Pinter, Budget Manager. Um, we have a laundry list of budget supplementals and transfers for year-end clear-up and cleanup. Uh, I'll read through them, and then if there are any questions, answer whatever questions we may have. Budget supplementals and transfers for current expense. We're looking to transfer $10,000 from the Mason County Public Health to the WSU Extension Office for the Oakland Bay Action Plan. $11,670 supplemental appropriation from the Washington State and Hood Canal Salmon, Salmon Enhancement Group to WSU Extension Noxious Weed Program. $29,407 to eliminate transfer from the Auditor's O&amp;M Fund to the Clerk. There was a request for $48,840 reduction of transfer from the Mental Health Fund to the Family Drug Court. That I'm recommending to eliminate or deduct from this, that transfer, uh, should stay in effect. So the net reduction of $56,577 to the current expense ending funded, fund balance will be reduced as a net reduction of $7,737. $25,000 record transfer out to Belfair Waste Water Reclamation from the Rural Sales Use Tax. Elimination of the $1 transfer out to the Current Expense Clerk Fund from the Auditor's O&amp;M. $5,000 elimination of a transfer out to the Current Expense Treasurer's Fund, as well as an $8,500 elimination of transfer out to the Current Expense Coroner's Fund, all from the Auditor's O&amp;M. From the Reserve for Technologies, elimination of a transfer into ERNR Fund of $3,500. The Veterans Assistance Fund is a reclassification, it's a coding change, of $19,122 to a transfer to Central Ops, to an inter-fund charge. Island Lake Management District, $1,500 transfer from the Ending Fund Balance to Professional Services. They're looking to spend additional dollars in this year's budget. For the 2013 LTGO Bond is a $294,782 transfer in from REIT for the bond payment. The O8 LTGO Bond Fund is a $304,512 transfer in from REIT 1, again, for the bond payment. A $1,224 reduction in the transfer from the Mason, uh, from the Mason County Landfill to Combined Utilities Admin Fund. The Wastewater North Bay Case Inlet is a $12,0100 increase transfer to Combined Utilities Admin Fund. Belfair Waste Water and Water Reclamation Funds are $6,300 interest, uh, to record the interest on the Belfair Water, Waste Water Internal Bond Payment. From the REIT 1 Fund, $304,512 transfer from REIT 1 to the 2008 LTGO Bond. $24,000 transfer from REIT 1 to the 2013 LTGO Bond. And $146,000 transfer in from current expense to increase ending fund balance in 350. For capital improvements, the $575,000 elimination of the transfer to parks. And Cumulative Reserve Land Fund is an $18,000 elimination of transfer out to the Landfill Fund. So the recommended action is to approve the following supplemental appropriations and transfers to the 15 budget as follows. The current expense is a net reduction of $7,737. Rural Sales Use Tax is $25,000. The Auditor's O&amp;M is $13,501. The Reserve for Technology is $3,500. Veterans Assistance Fund is $19,122. Island Lake Management District is $1,500. 2013 LTGO Bond is $2,900, I'm sorry, $2,000, $294,672. The 2008 LTGO Bond is $3,004, $304,512. Mason County Landfill is $1,224. Wastewater North Bay Case Inlet is $12,011. Belfair Waste Water and Water Reclamation is $6,300. REIT 1 is $182,512. Capital Improvement REIT 2 is $575, and the Cumulative Reserve Landfill is $18,000.
Thank you. Now that that has been explained to the public, is there anybody out there in the public who has any questions for staff in regards to the presentation you just heard? Yes, please, show.
Um, so, does first LTGO Bond transfer to the REIT number 1, where is that, 294? Is it in the, um, the 146 that's down in the capital figures?
Correct.
Any other questions for staff? Yes, Your Honor.
Tony Sheldon, Superior Court. When did you become aware that these transfers in and out did not match?
Um, earlier in the year, about, um, September, October.
And, um, other than the public notice that, um, we all see in the newspaper and that kind of thing, was there any, uh, specific communication with Superior Court or, uh, the therapeutic courts that the original request was to reduce by almost $50,000, our budget authority?
Not that I'm aware of.
You'll be given an opportunity to testify.
I'm just asking a question.
No, I, I recognize your about that.
No, I'm not going, I'm not going anywhere but, but questions right now.
Okay. You have the other?
And you are now recommending that that, um, $48,840 reduction not occur? Why is that?
Correct. Uh, per your, your request.
And, did you know, do you know what the basis of that is?
Um, my understanding is, is that you, you have an agreement with public health or with the mental health tax to have a transfer of up to $157,000 and change in MOU that was recorded in last year's, um, that was recorded last year or was agreed to last year, and the dollars that were put into the budget didn't reflect the dollars that were in the MOU.
Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for staff? Commissioner, do you have any questions for staff?
Um, could you explain to me the, on the 2013 LTGO Bond, there's a $24,000 transfer in to that bond fund? Just that the...
The interest had, the amount was incorrect.
Okay.
Yep. There was a component of the interest that didn't get included into the, um, payment.
Okay.
I have one about the, the bonds as well. I guess it would be helpful if, especially for the public, if we had something a little bit next time, a description of what the bond is for. Is the 2013 bond for the...
Jail renovation.
For jail renovation? Okay, and the 20, 2008 bond?
I believe that was for the purchase of the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Any further questions? We will close the staff part. Thank you. Uh, next is an opportunity for the public to testify. Is anybody would like to testify on any items on this supplemental? There are none, we'll close public testimony. Commissioner, deliberations?
Well, these are, um, basically cleanups. Um, there was just a, a look-through, from what I understand, of, of what had been, um, approved in the budget and what, what the actual needs were that, that are being cleaned up. Um, there was, you know, just a new system last year and, and a lot of things, um, that didn't carry over the way they should have. So I, I see this as, as mostly a cleanup. Um, I don't, barring hearing from anybody else that there might be a problem with any of these, I have no problem approving them.
Commissioner Sheldon?
Oh, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking for the memo that, uh, I had, here it is, from, Paige Hansen wrote us a memo on November 9th about the, uh, transfers in and transfers out, and, uh, said that there's a $1.6 million difference that needs to be resolved and balanced by the end of fiscal 2015. So that's part of what we're taking care of now.
That is correct.
Okay. The state auditors have already put the county on notice that there will be an audit finding for 2015 if it isn't corrected, so, uh, we're, we're taking care of that. So, but it, it has taken us a while to, to take care of it, but, uh, I guess we're under the wire.
If, uh, you will allow me a little leniency, I have a, a small concern, and since it is somebody that works within the county, I'd like to be able to ask them. Your Honor, I'm a little confused, is there a problem that we should know about? Because I didn't understand what you were saying, and since you didn't testify, I couldn't ask you. So is there an issue that we should be aware of before we vote on this?
My issue is that, um, I believe this was known much earlier in the year, um, maybe even January, and if you were going to reduce someone's budget by a significant amount of money, you shouldn't wait until December to do it. And if you are going to request that someone's budget be reduced, please let them know specifically ahead of time so that you don't have to just look at the public announcements in, in the newspaper. Um, had I not seen this, and had I signed my vouchers for, um, next voucher time in, in December, I would not have had enough money to pay. And as, as you probably know, if an elected official goes over budget, it comes out of their own pocket. And so this was an error. Uh, we were to have been getting, uh, all of this money, and, and there was a request to pull back $48,000 without even specifically asking us or telling us that you were going to address it. And so mine is a, a communication issue. Please communicate directly to the department rather than just publishing it in the newspaper and, and, um, having it available on your website. We found this at page 105 of 110-page briefing materials.
Point, point well taken, Your Honor. We will, and we'll debate with that in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other deliberations? Very nice, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Sheriff, recommend, or I've moved that we approve the following supplemental appropriations, transfers to the 2015 budget as follows. Current expense a net reduction of $56,700...
Does that change? It's a definite change. $7,300.
Seven thousand, $7,737. Rural Sales Use Tax, $25,000. Auditor's O&amp;M, $13,501. Reserve for Technology, $3,500. Veterans Assistance Fund, $19,122. Island Lake Management District, $1,500. 2013 LTGO Bond, $294,672. 2008 LTGO Bond, $3,004, $304,512. Mason County Landfill, $1,224. Wastewater North Bay Case Inlet, $12,011. Belfair Waste Water and Water Reclamation, $6,300. Capital Improvements REIT 1, $182,512. Capital Improvements REIT 2, $575,000. And Cumulative Reserve Landfill, $18,000.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion for these, uh, this recommended action.
It's been broken second for the approval of the following supplemental appropriation transfers to the 2015 budget as follows. Current expense, net reduction of $7,737. Rural Sales Use Tax, $25,000. Auditor's O&amp;M, $30,501. Reserve for Technology, $3,500. Veterans Assistance Fund, $19,122. Island Lake Management District, $1,500. 2013 LTGO Bond, $294,672. 2008 LTGO Bond, $304,512. Mason County Landfill, $1,224. Uh, Wastewater North Bay, uh, Case Inlet, $12,011. Belfair Waste Water, uh, and Water Reclamation, $6,300. Capital Improvements REIT 1, $182,512. Capital Improvements REIT 2, $575,000 even, and Cumulative Reserve Landfill, $18,000. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, the motion carries. And the hearing is closed, that's the last hearing. I, we've already done all the rest of our work, I'll, I'll, what should do, adjourn?
Adjourn, we can adjourn.
Second. We adjourn. Aye, everybody?